I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, take your roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Marseth.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Acormick.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Hoggins.
Appcent.
Hall.
Here.
All right, first thing up is comments from citizens present. Is there anybody that has anything to say? Yes, come forward, please. State your name and address.
Sandra Long.
Up here, please.
Oh, sorry. My first name.
Well, hopefully not your last.
Sandra Long, and I live at 1100 Grandview Drive. I'm a District 6 resident, and I had spoke to Joyce Hall this last week regarding the drive behind the high school, specifically Fillmore Hill. And my request as a resident worried about walkers and students and the traffic back there to vote for not allowing parking between 11th and 12th Street at the top of Fillmore. So I work down at Willow River Elementary School, and I travel that route every single morning. And it's scary back there. And I'm sure Officer Jensen can, Chief Jensen can attest to that. He's been back there and sees it too. So that's all. I'm here just to say I know that the Public Safety Committee was discussing it, the no parking on either side of the street. But when you have buses and kids walking on either side, riding bikes up either side, student parents dropping off, it's just a, it's a mess. And I'm just, every morning I'm waiting for the accident to happen. So that's why I'm here, to just try to help move that hopefully in the right direction as anybody that would be back there in the morning would understand parking just between 11th and 12th. I know it's only allowed between, I believe it's November and March back there, is very scary. So that's just why I'm here, to offer my comments and my observations every morning because I, I'm there at arrival time for the students and staff is the time I travel that route every day.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Sandra.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Any other comments? Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Ron Howard, 1902 Shasta Drive. I realize summer is pretty much over, but the parking lot in, the beach parking lot, they've taken the sign down, no trailers. Used to be no trailers in it. And yesterday I went down there and there was three vehicles with trailers taking up 12 spots. And it's just a little, you know, the parking lot at the other end, the boat landing where you can put a trailer, was half-empty. So I believe it should be no trailers in there for, I'm not sure why it got changed, but...
There was some construction down in the area. I will check with the Public Works Director. That the sign may have come down because they were working in there putting a sewer line through, or a storm sewer line through?
Yeah, I realize, no, that sign's been down for two or three years.
Okay.
They, I think they took it down because there's a couple that come in during the summer with boards for rent, and they drop a trailer and put the car next to it, which is, you know, they're taking up two spots, but now they're going a long way and they take up five spots at a time. So just bring it up.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Paul Burning, 1806 Trillium Way, Hudson, Wisconsin, in the city. The gentleman before me made me sad, saying it's almost the end of summer. Shouldn't have said that, man. He got me in the, in the blue mood here. I just wanted to run through a couple of things really quick since it's not on the agenda tonight. As most of you know, that I've been following the EMS situation very closely and continue to monitor this. Anytime there's a meeting, I try to make it. Anytime it's on YouTube, I try to watch it or listen to it to and from my destinations. And just over the last few months, it's, it's gotten a little frustrating as a citizen out there, not only talking to people, but also as just myself, watching the wheels seem to spin, no traction and no real movement on much of anything beyond a few things like a fundraiser and not getting our partners to buy in. So a couple of things I wanted to run through, and I realize I'm limited on time, so feel free to stop me if I, if I overrun, because there's lots of notes here. So in the last, in the EMS meeting prior to the one this morning, it was brought up that we need to add budget for volunteer EMTs because EMTs are not taking shifts. And I can remember very vividly a lot of folks not wanting the sale of EMS because of our local EMTs and because that just makes them stronger, yet it seems to be that we have a lot of part-time EMTs and not shifts being taken. The staffing for more transfers. So wasn't this also one of the reasons why there was objections to moving to Lakeview is because they would use one of their ambulances outside of Hudson? And so by bringing on more staff and utilizing one of our two main ambulances, aren't we going to be, or for inter-facility transfers, aren't we going to be taking an ambulance out of service for our citizens? And to further talk about that, there was, in the EMS Commission meeting this morning, they were talking about using the, and I know Tom could probably correct me in the meeting, not now, but using the ambulances that are staffed for inter-facility transfers and working a schedule for staff to be on-call from the time of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And if that's the case, why are we having 911 calls on-call while we have a staffed vehicle using for inter-facility transfers at those times? All right, so other things, option three is basically being enacted, but the partners aren't buying in. That's not good. It's not being enacted, but it is being enacted. We have no clear direction. This is just a little pet peeve of mine is we talk about having to have these folks that are on-staff with the EMS, on-alert, on-call all the time, but yet I go to the grocery store and there's a paramedic chase vehicle in the parking lot with a paramedic shopping. Not quite 90 seconds to roll if you're in the freezer section with a pile of groceries. And that's a little bit different than what Lakeview is willing to do, again, in the 90 seconds to wheels rolling. We're talking about, and maybe even a policy change there in using citywide vehicles. Food for thought, something to bring up. Sustainability. So far, nothing I've heard, nothing I've seen. There has been no progress towards sustainability. And I don't know about you, but when I think of like sustainable energy, I think about something that can produce itself over and over and over again without having to go to a well or going to a different source to, for a catalyst for that. Right now, we have no self-sustaining, and we're not driving to a zero per capita. We're going actually in the opposite direction and looking at now $19.50 per capita to our partners. Again, our partners who made a motion this morning and then withdrew to withdraw from their agreement with us. A study. I listened to these meetings at least twice through just to make sure that I'm not missing a motion for a study. And I can swear at least three people minimum came up at that city council meeting that lasted like, what seemed like, three days. I could swear that there were at least three people that asked for a study. Why are we not doing a study? We need to look at the whole picture. So I think that is very important.
Four minutes right now, Paul.
Okay, so our municipal partners are based on this morning, pretty much looking at a 50-50 formula, which if you don't know what that is, for time's sake, maybe talk to one of the EMS Commission members. But really, when you think about this, it's not just revenue, it's not just expense, but it's also standby service is what everyone is paying for, and that's what's being subsidized here. And you got to remember that unlike fire, the library, and police, there is another element that comes into play in Medicare and Medicaid, and that is we're having to continually gouge the private sector or people that have private health insurance to subsidize and make, make up the gaps in Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements for ambulance rides. So that's something that I, I don't know why, it just seems like that gets overlooked constantly, and that's not going away as the population gets older. How are we doing? Buzzer?
You're hit five minutes.
Okay, I, I don't need to take up any more time. You guys got very important things to work on. So if you want more of my notes, I have them available. I can email them to you or get with you afterwards. But thank you very much for your time, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other citizen comments? Any other citizen comments?
I'm Diane Yocum, New Richmond, Wisconsin, business owner of Hudson, Wisconsin. I just have a question about, I was here at the earlier meeting, and one of the things that was mentioned at the last council meeting regarding a building for the new fire station and EMS was that Mayor McConnell, O'Connell suggested using the old fire station for EMS. And I was, nothing was said in the last meeting about that, and I just proposed that question. Is that, if that, I know you won't answer me now, but if that is going by the wayside and what's going to happen to that building? Is it going to be vacant? Is it going to be sold to help with defray the costs? The other thing is that, the comment was made that there was almost five acres of land, four to 45,000 square foot building, and the comment was made, there's no, no area for expansion in that. Well, in calculating the five acres, that's over 213,000, almost 213, 14,000 square feet, four to 45,000 square foot building. To me, I mean, I know you really have to have some parking lot and green space and all that stuff. It seems to me like there would be some room for expansion on that as well. I just wanted to point that out to council because I, it brought questions to my mind. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Any other citizen comments? Any other citizen comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Discussion possible action on consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of September 5, 2017, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check, approve the issuance of 11 regular operator licenses that are on file with the city clerk's office for the period of September 19, 2017, to June 30, 2019, and also to approve the issuance of two temporary operator licenses for Robert Mueller and Dustin Danielson for the three-on-three Hudson Hockey Association pig roast. To approve claims in the amount of $375,491.79. To, we're going to pull D. Is that correct?
Pull D, please. Yes, thank you.
To place on file the August 8, 2017, and September 12, 2017, Public Utility Commission meeting minutes. To approve the following as community events: Celebrate the holiday and light up the night on November 24, 2017; celebrate the holiday's candlelight stroll on December 1, 2017; and celebrate the holiday's Santas by the park on December 2, 2017. To approve a pawnbroker, second-hand jewelry dealer, second-hand article dealer, and second-hand article dealer slash flea market license for the old coin shop at 521 Second Street. Contingent on any payment of outstanding debt as well as building inspection approval and community development approval of signage. To approve the community development clerk position description of the account clerk three pay grade and to authorize the city administrator to begin the recruitment process. To award the dog park fence contract a best-built fence in the amount of $25,514.09 and to use the donation funds from the Dog Park Association for the funding for this project. To approve the temporary increase of $3 per shift weekdays and $6 per shift weekends for EMTs and a 20 cent per hour shift differential for paramedics between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And to award the 2017 sidewalk curb and gutter replacement project to De Bruzy Concrete in the amount of $38,866 plus 5% contingency. And to award the fuel bid to Countryside Cooperative.
Will we approve?
Second. Got a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Marseth.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
Acormick.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Go back to item D.
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We do have questions, though.
There is a representative here.
Okay. Darn it. All right, so everybody have a chance to take a look at, there are two items here on, on D, by the way, so we pulled them both, didn't we not?
Yes.
All right, so I just have a question. What is this event?
Mary Evers, from the Noon Rotary Club.
Yes. I'm representing the Hudson Rotary Clubs, both of them, daybreak and the noontime one. And we have an event we've proposed called Rock the River. We have some musical connection, and he got us a band you wouldn't believe called Abracadabra. They played with, some of the members played with Bob Dylan, Steve Miller, Prince, Stevie Nicks, John Mayer. I mean, it's a really good band. So this will be a fundraiser for us, and the FIPs had an opening. So it's on a Saturday night, February 10, this winter, and it only holds 247 people, so it'll be very limited, and we'd like the temporary Class B picnic license so we can sell beer and wine before and during intermission. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Both of them?
Both.
All of item D. Okay.
And I hope to see you all there.
Nice pitch. Okay, got a motion, a second. Discussion. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on Resolution 18-17, a proposed resolution to restore full funding for Hudson Area Joint Library. This was brought forward at the last council meeting. Everybody have a chance to read the resolution? Do we want to read it again, or do we need to? Yes. Right?
Roy Schoberg, 1108 Vine Street, resident of Hudson since 1988. Served on the Board of Trustees of the Library Board, past president of the Hudson Area Library. Headed up the Steering Committee for the Library. And I'm here today speaking on behalf of the County Board. I'm also the county supervisor for District 5, which covers about one-third of the citizens of the city of Hudson. I read this resolution, and it's really troubling. It seems to be politically motivated. And I'd just like to speak against that resolution and justify the actions of the county, if I could. I passed out to everyone here one-page document which I titled "Impact of Breach of Commitment" on the Summit Public Library, Somerset Public Library. So this is one of our favorite, several neighboring libraries that have been adversely affected by the recent decision made by the Board of Trustees of the library to terminate funding of its neighbor libraries. As this memo points out, before the joint library was formed, it was the county that was the only tax collector for the residents of the Town of St. Joseph, the Town of Hudson, and the Village of North Hudson with respect to the library. So when the joint library was formed, a major economic shift was about to occur. Instead of the county collecting the tax and allocating it equitably amongst all the libraries, those three municipalities decided if they now personally, directly collect the tax, they would do the same allocation. So this promise was made in 2002 and 2004, and had they not made that promise, had that promise not been made, there would be no joint library. So the county relied on that promise because now the county isn't going to collect any tax anymore from those municipalities. Well, for about a dozen years, there was no concern because the library did what it was asked to do. But then a couple of years ago, and now I have data in 2016, so just with respect to Somerset, the residents of the Town of St. Joseph borrowed 2,000 books from the Somerset Library. The Town of Hudson borrowed just 86, and the Village of North Hudson borrowed 122. So had the county been collecting the tax and allocating funds, we would have written a check to Somerset for $8,574. But because the cities, excuse me, because the village, excuse me, the Board of Trustees of the library have now decided to rescind their agreement with us, they're paying none of that. So Somerset, just one of the libraries, is hurt by 8,500. Well, just like any other legal action, there's consequences. You divorce your spouse, you don't get to do it without allocating property. So when this was learned of by the county, the county said, what can we do to make up for this? We can't sue the, the library. It's within its legal rights, as council here has pointed out. But we can have some equitable relief. So the county has taken action to reduce the loss suffered to our neighboring libraries. That's responsible. That's honorable. And so what the county is doing, it's paying as much as we can, but only, the only money we're collecting is $3,531. That's the amount that's going to Somerset. So Somerset, because of Hudson Library's action, is going to lose $5,000 in funding next year. So that's one library. Roberts Library, another small library, is losing 13,000. New Richmond, another small neighboring library, is losing 8,900. This is the amount that the county, had the county collected the tax instead of the various cities, then this is the amount that they would have received. Right now, without county remedial action, Roberts would be down 13,000 on its small budget, New Richmond down 8,900 on its small budget, River Falls would be down $26,000. So the county has done what it can to make up some of this difference. But still, there's a 59% reduction. All these libraries are hurting because of the action of our own library here. So, you know, what to do about this? Well, I at least ask that you understand the position of the county. I at least ask that. And to say that we were wrongful about doing this, that we were singling out the library, well, the Hudson Library is the only one that's breaching its agreement. So we're not singling them out. They're the party at fault. They're the one divorcing us. So I ask that you not pass this resolution because it's not going to do any good. The county supervisors, including myself and another county supervisor from Hudson, all voted 15 to 3, only three opposed, to make, take this action to cover some of the loss suffered by our neighbors. It's the equitable thing to do. Finally, I'm not so sure that the current trustees of the Hudson Area Joint Library are meeting the standards of Wisconsin public library funding. It's just been a struggle at this library all along. If we undo the joint library, then there's not going to be any funding issues with the Town of St. Joseph, the Town of Hudson, or the Village of North Hudson because there's no levy limit for those cities for the county library tax. So if we undo the joint libraries, at least study it, we could see what the impact is going to be. I think it's actually going to be a fast improvement in the support that our local library gives. So I, for one, am not acting against the interest of my city. I'm asked, I'm acting in the honor and dignity of my city who has allowed this public library to reneg on its promise. Thanks. And I'll take questions if you have questions.
Questions? Okay, anybody else?
Good evening. Bob Long, 1100 Grandview Drive, City of Hudson. And I am also on the County Board of Supervisors, representing District 6, which includes four awards in the City of Hudson and one in the Town of Hudson. So I was one of the three that voted against the resolution recently to cut the funding for the Hudson Area Library. And basically, what I tried to explain to the County Board is whether you think it's right or wrong or fair or not, essentially, the county is penalizing our local library for doing something they had every, every right to do because the county didn't like it or they didn't think it was fair. Well, maybe fairness, we can talk about all day on. But essentially, they're penalizing the library. The, the Library Board made decision, a financial decision, and they're obligated to our citizens and our taxpayers to make sure that they're making good financial decisions on behalf of the library to maintain its financial sustainability. So you can easily argue that those, that decision was prudent and appropriate and legal. So for the county to come back and say, we don't like it, we're going to cut your funding, is basically, in my opinion, poor policy. It's hard to ground your policy on whether you like something or not. It's more important whether it's legal and whether it's appropriate. I don't believe cutting the library funding was appropriate at all on behalf of the county. So I would ask for your consideration of supporting this. I think it is important, as Supervisor Schoberg indicated, that you do understand the county's position, the 15 at least. And I want to make sure that you discuss it and you consider all the different ramifications, but I would strongly encourage you to support the resolution. And I would also strongly encourage you to support it unanimously to make sure that you're sending the right message to the County Board that there are differences in opinion, and this is an issue that really deserves to be reconsidered at the county level. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Paul Burning, 1806 Trillium Way, City of Hudson. I also, I serve on the Hudson Area Joint Library Board of Trustees. I sit on the Finance Committee, and I can say that we are probably going to project to run a deficit again next year. As you guys know, every department in this city and every department in our surrounding municipalities and even our far neighbors like Somerset, Baldwin, they're, all their departments are asking for more money with more and more burden being put on them by their citizens year in and year out. And when it comes to this decision by the county, yes, the Hudson Area Joint Library was singled out, and it was singled out in a, in a manner that it was not a legal marriage. So when you use the reference of a legal marriage, then you have some claim, or at least in Wisconsin, it's community property state, but in a marriage, you have some claim to some marital assets. This marriage was not legal. And also, something like this should be resolved in a court of law, not through county supervisors that should be appropriating the spending of funds for the county and supervising those dollars. In the case of this being political, I sit on the board, and thank you for honoring me with that because my wife is down at the library all the time, and my kids love checking out books. So as far as there's a breach, there's not a breach if there isn't a legal binding contract. And since it's not a legal binding contract, there is no breach. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but, you know.
The agreement, I mean, it was discussed before. The agreement provided for amending the agreement, which the council had the right to do. The question was whether the county had, whether the requirement, and it wasn't even part of the resolution of county approval, but whether they could impose that on the city. So that was, I mean, that was all discussed before. What the county was essentially doing is saying, "Take city, village, town tax funds and send them outside the city." And that is highly questionable legally.
So I ask that you fully support this resolution, and I ask that you do it unanimously, and that you send a message to the 15 on the county board that the City of Hudson would like to have its full funding restored. And that's all I really got. But, anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Anybody?
All right, so I think there are a few things that really need to be cleared up here. Roy had said in his, when he first spoke, that he thought that this was politically motivated. He did say a couple of things here also that would indicate that what the county did is politically motivated. Roy has been fighting for some time, even when he chaired the Joint Area Library, had been fighting to make our library just a Hudson library. He worked hard to undo the joint library agreement. And, and so he has tried to make this a Hudson standalone library. I, I would suggest that it was a political move on his part at the county to take away the money that he did to try to force us into a financial situation whereby we might have to disband the joint area library that we have. I think it's important for all the members here to fully understand the history of this library, because it's not just the agreement that was entered into that Roy referenced back in, I believe, 2002. But it was everything subsequent to that agreement that brought us to where we were when the library had to make the decision that they did to not send that money over to those other libraries that apparently had been in the agreement. First of all, number one, nobody had the, had the authority to bind our library or the municipalities that were part of the Joint Area Library to continued payment to those surrounding libraries. Again, no one had the authority to do that.
That's a question.
No, Roy, it's not.
You're not a lawyer.
The agreement provided specifically that the agreement could be amended by the municipalities. That was a specific provision in that joint library agreement.
And you know, regardless of status as an attorney, Roy, nobody can bind, nobody can bind any deliberative body to a future obligation like that. Nobody can do that. So there was no one with the authority that could in perpetuity bind our Joint Area Library to making those payments. Now, having said that, what put us into the position that we were in is that...
I'm sorry, but you can't speak to that. Would, would you know that the library could enter into a long-term contract, and the contract will remain enforceable?
I see speaking.
This, yeah, well. I think everybody that, that when we first went through this recognized and agreed that nobody had the, it's a, it's a governmental, but no governmental authority had, can bind future governmental authorities. That changes with every election, and you know that.
Long-term lease?
You know, there was no lease there.
Long-term contract?
It's really moot, because the, the agreement itself provided for amending any provision of that.
Now...
So this, this discussion or issue is...
Okay, but to move on, to move on, there is, statutorily, every one of our libraries in the state must meet an exempt amount in order to be exempt from county taxation. As Roy pointed out, the counties generally collect taxes for their library system unless the municipalities have their own libraries. Those municipalities have to meet an exempt amount. That exempt amount has to be signed off by each municipality, and then has to be signed off by the county. Unfortunately, for about 10 years, we had never met our exempt amount. And our municipality, unfortunately, Hudson, being the one that used to have to sign off on that, pretty much by itself, signed off on an amount that was not accurate. The other three communities that had joined into the, into the joint library never, up to that point, had to sign off on an exempt amount, and so I give them a little leeway on that. But the county also had to sign off on that. Everybody was culpable, to the point where, by statute, every single year, each municipality and/or county has got to increase the funding level for every one of their libraries. That did not happen. Any funding increase was voluntary on the part of our municipalities. So the exempt amount that was being signed off on was inaccurate, not right. And the county should never have signed off on that and told us, "Either you get up to the exempt amount, or we will tax for you." And as I said, every one of the municipalities, as well as the county, was culpable. And by the time this was recognized as a mistake, like I said, about 10 years later, and I believe 2012, Roy, and at the time, I believe you were also Chair of the Library Board at the time, when that was recognized, we were so far behind in our exempt amount that in order to get caught up would have been a tax bill to our residents of about twice what we were currently paying, at a time when we were just coming out of a recession, and a time when our community was at its levy limits, not to mention the other communities that were part of that Joint Area Library. So we were put into a bind that no other library was put into in, in the county. All the other libraries had kept up with their exempt amount. They were all up to, up to the funding level that they were supposed to be at. Our joint library was, in fact, at a funding level that was about one-half of what it was supposed to have been statutorily. You tell me who was, who, who had to bear a financial hardship. And there's no question, it was our library. Who, by the way, was Chair of that board at the time? For how many years while they were signing off on that exempt amount? The incorrect exempt amount? Sitting right there. Now, not to mention that, not to mention that.
How many years?
Well, I don't know how many years.
Talk facts, talk...
Not for 10 years, I know that, Roy, but for certainly some of those years, you were, you were chairing that library board. Now, I think it's also interesting, if you go back and look at the minutes... If you go back and look at the minutes of the library board, you'll find that this was the first time, that I could find, that it was mentioned that one of the remedies was not to pay these, these communities, these other libraries, was brought up in the Finance Committee by the head of the Finance, the Chair of the Finance Committee, which was Mr. Schoburg. That's the first time it was ever referenced. Well, I don't know. It was the first time I saw it was mentioned by you in the Finance Committee.
Why don't you and I discuss this in private?
Well, you, you, you wanted to come up here and explain what was going on in the county's position. Clearly, Roy, if there's politics being played here, it's on your part. We were responding to a very critical financial crisis, and we did the only responsible thing that we could do. We had a fiduciary obligation to our taxpayers, a fiduciary obligation to do what was right. And what was right was to pay taxes to just our library. We were the only library system in the state that was supporting more than our library. The only system, the only library, the only communities in the state were there, that were also using our taxpayers' dollars to support surrounding libraries at the same time. We had a fiduciary obligation. We did what we thought was right. We are still in a crisis, because the only thing that happened to help us statutorily, so that we would not have to get up to the exempt amount, because that exempt amount right now, folks, is still twice what we're currently paying. So there was a Band-Aid put in place, and you know it, it's the three-year average. That three-year average has not helped us significantly. In fact, we have two communities right now that, that are paying less today than they paid in 2010. So, Roy, were you right, that we do have a financial situation, crisis probably with our local library? Absolutely, we do. There is no doubt about it. If we were to go right now to a Hudson library, it would cost us more than twice what we're currently paying. And you all know about, as we're talking about our budget right now, the situation that we're in. No, I think what the county did is rather than try to help out, the only library that is truly in a fiscal crisis instead ignored that, and politically is trying to punish us, to force us into a situation where we would perhaps have to consider being a standalone library run by the City of Hudson by itself. I would hope that each of you would represent your constituencies and vote for this resolution, because this is in the best interest of our community. It is in the best interest of our library. It is the fiduciary obligation that we all have to our citizenry. So I would hope that you would support this resolution. Anybody else?
Outstanding protest.
Great. Protest is noted.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Where's that?
Yes.
Alls?
Yes.
The former?
Yes.
Mother?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
I move we adopt Resolution 18-17.
Second.
Got a motion and second for approval. Discussion?
I have concerns about this motion, because I think the basic, some of the basic things are that while it may not have been legal, and that's not been decided, it's, was certainly not ethical to stop the payment. We weren't living up to the, let's call it the Hudson Area Joint Library, but they really responded to a lot of our direction. Was not living up to the commitment that was made many years ago. And to just unilaterally do that did cause harm. The basic issue, as, as I hear, is that none of the municipalities has been supporting the library as at the levels it should have been. In fact, I know we're in the lower, probably still in the lower quarter of average payment of all the libraries in the state of Wisconsin. So we're significantly underfunded compared to just about anybody you want to compare us to. So that's, and that's been the basic issue, and it's, it's tough getting the money. And we've done, we've made some improvements. Hudson's made some significant contributions in the last, last couple of years to bring things back. But we're still not at the level that we need to be, or that we, we should have been based on the, on the commitments. So I don't know that this resolution is really going to do anything. It doesn't add, what does it add to solving that problem? That's, that's my concern. Is it just, we're going to throw, they threw a rock at us, we're going to throw a rock back at them? I don't, I, I just don't know the value of that.
Further discussion?
I'm having a difficult time with this, because, as you know, I do support the library. And as Jim said, we don't have the funding that we need. And I don't think that escalating this fight is really in anybody's best interests. And so I'm, I'm torn on this. I'll leave it at that.
Further discussion? So, I guess, Joyce, I don't know how to respond to that. I can understand perhaps where you're torn, Jim. I agree, you know, that, that, you know, maybe it doesn't, it's not going to persuade anybody at the county. But that's, you know, the nature of resolutions, I guess. And again, I would say, the whole point here is that we support what's going on with our library and our citizenry. And it is a pushback at the county, there's no doubt about it, absolutely. Because we disagree, I do, I disagree 100% with what they did. Again, they're punishing us. We are the only library that is funded at half the level that we should be in the entire county. And as a fiduciary, sitting on that library board, I don't have any apologies for voting to not send that money over to those other library systems. And in fact, when it happened, we didn't get any pushback from the other libraries. They said, "Yeah, we're not happy about it, but we understand the situation you're in." So, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Four to one. Thank you. Discussion of possible action on proposed road utility in Stormwater Pond construction slash easement agreement relating to the Carmichael, parenthetically Gerard Companies Development Project and adjacent city-owned property. Mike?
Well, why don't you give the overview on what's going on?
Sure. Gerard Companies is proposing a elderly housing development immediately north of the proposed Dog Track redevelopment project and east of Carmichael Drive. To get, as, in the exhibit that I provided in everybody's packets, you can see the first phase of it. Triangle parcel that they recently purchased. To gain access to that property, they have to cross over city-owned property, which is the 12 acres to the east of the development site. To do that requires an extension of Maxwell Drive and associated improvements with the stormwater retention ponds and facility, and, and pipes. So the Plan Commission reviewed concept development plans on August 22nd and approved those. So now we're to a point where we're finalizing how do, how do we gain access, or how does the developer get access to their development site, understanding they can't have direct access off of Carmichael Drive. So this is the legal mechanism that, that we arrived at that Kathy and Liz and I have been working on for the past, I guess, several weeks. We've gone through a number of different gyrations of what this might look like, and what this does. The only thing that's changed since the staff report is, the ponds would be private. They would not be public, but we would maintain the ability to go in there and do maintenance on those ponds in case somebody failed to do so. And then we would assess that cost back to the owner at that time. So what this really is, is it gets them access and makes improvements on city property that would actually increase probably the value of our property. The road is located as far, far west as it could be, which creates about a little over four acres of additional development space east of where you see that little half cul-de-sac is. So I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Kathy, do you have...
Yeah, so how this is going to actually happen is, we're working on an agreement whereby, and what we're looking for from the council is, the road is obviously going to go on city property. And the agreement at this point is for the owners and developers of the Gerard property to construct a road on city property to city specs, so that it would be a public city road. But the developer will pay all the cost of construction of the street and related utilities. Similar with that pond that is going to go on city property. That is necessary to drain or take runoff from the Gerard parcel. So they would construct that stormwater pond and related pipes and so forth that go with it. So we're working on that agreement. It's not totally done. The city would then, after some period of a time, probably when they've developed at least the Phase 1 of their property, the city would accept that road. Usually, they're dedicated as a condition of plat approval or CSM approval. But in this case, we're getting the access in first and then doing the CSM. So the city would adopt a resolution dedicating the street. The city's done that before with respect to other pri... The city's done that before with respect to other properties that were developed. We just want the council, we're looking for approval of that overall project and then also authorization. The agreement's pretty well fleshed out, but it needs to be tweaked on certain things like the dedication. We don't have all the information necessary for the plans. Those still need to be approved. All would have to be approved by the city engineer and then upon completion of the road, again, by the city engineer to make sure it meets all city standards. But authorization to the mayor to sign the agreement when it meets city staff approval and my approval, unless we run into something that we think is different from what we're explaining to you. I don't think we will. The, the difference now, we at first thought the stormwater pond would be public as well, but it really only drains property from the Gerard parcel at this point. So this agreement will also include an easement from the city to have that stormwater pond on the city property.
Who's going to maintain the pond?
The, the Gerard, owners of the Gerard parcel will maintain the pond. There's language in there. You know, the city parcel may be sold at some point to private ownership. If that pond is used by any other developers, they would be...
Pay their proportionate share.
As a backup provision to make sure that the maintenance is done properly. We've got a provision in the agreement whereby the city has the authority, but not obligation, to come in and maintain that pond if the private property owners don't maintain it and then to assess it as a special charge against the benefiting properties. We do that with private streets and other developments, so then that's the backup provision.
Yeah. And it was certainly something you wanted to include because we do have a few private ponds in the city right now that they're kind of in a gray area, that no one's maintaining them, and they, they do need maintenance. So this is a mechanism.
Because it came up recently, last year or whenever.
Oh, okay, yeah. We've done it for private streets. We haven't maybe done it for private stormwater ponds, but we need to do that sort of, because of, to make sure they're properly maintained.
I move to approve the proposal.
I'll second.
Got a motion, second. Further discussion?
Can I just ask for a specific direction to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
Yep, I'll add that to the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Thanks, Mike. Anybody?
I guess, I guess my, my question is, what is, is this a net added value to the city? How do we, how do we gain from, from this? And what do we gain from this? When you said our, our property, our, we would have some property remaining that would be of more value?
Yeah, absolutely. They're, they're improving our property at their expense.
Okay, so we get a road that goes into our property, which we at some point may sell?
Yep.
Yes.
With utilities. So water and sewer too.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of state legislation regarding quarries. This is added at the request of Jim Webber.
At the time, we had received a, a information from league municipalities that there was a, let's see if I can find it here. Basically, as part of the budget, there was a, a resolution passed or a, basically, they were, they were doing, building the laws during the budget process that would significantly restrict municipalities' ability to regulate gravel pits, basically, you could call it that. And it was, the restrictions were huge, you know, you couldn't control the traffic, the hours of operation, the explosive, mining, a lot of things. It really took a, appeared from that to take away all of our ability. And so I asked that that be on here so that we could talk about it and say, "Do we, how do we want to object to this?" Or, "Do we want to object to this?" But in the meantime, now it appears that the information is that the government is, that the governor is going to line veto that particular thing and, and the explanation from the league is that he thinks this legislation of this nature requires full, full discussion.
Several legislation. It was on the league site, or in league newsletter that came out.
Yeah, and I, I also read it separately in a newspaper account as well. So I think the, the need to take any action at this point is probably moot, but it's quite concerning that somebody would be able to slip in something like that and they were unnamed persons as to how that actually got in there. But to take away our ability to regulate things in our border, that, that's significant, but it was very scary. So...
Anybody else have anything to say, comments?
We need to keep, continue to monitor and watch for this to come back. It sounds like it may not be dead, or, you know, may come back.
It depends on whether the legislature, after they pass the budget, whether they're, decide to be done for this session or whether they... Well, they can bring it up next session.
Yeah, without postponing it. I'm sure the league will be monitoring this closely.
Yeah.
The only thing I guess I have to add is we have the Hudson Raider Homecoming this week. Parade is Wednesday. Hope to see everybody there. Four o'clock. And, and good luck to the team on Friday night. And we got, I believe, the art fair in the park this, this coming weekend. Saturday, Sunday. So hope to see it all there too. That's all I've got. Anybody else? Kathy? Anybody? All right. Entertained motion?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned.